Good evening. We are meeting in the regular city council meeting agenda today. The notice is hereby given that the above call meeting of the governing body of the city of Balcony Heights, Texas will be held on Monday, July 28th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. in the Justice Center located at 3300 Hillcrest Drive, Balcony Heights, Texas 78201. To consider and act upon any lawful subject which may come before said meeting, including, among others, the following items to be discussed and acted upon. We do have a call of order and we do have a quorum of all council members present. We're going to now do the invocation and pledges of allegiance to the U.S. and the Texas flag. Who would like to lead the procession of that? Jimmy? You did?
No.
Okay. Get it to Jack over there and let him counsel on burden.
Thank you very much. I'm honored to be here. I'm here for Balcony Heights. And the justice state with the need of the council citizens are heard. So I want to make sure that I stipulate this again, creating disruptive behavior and without any derogatory statements or comments or seemingly not an individual council member or council person and be ruled out of order by the presiding officer. Continuation of the kind of behavior could result in being suspended by the officer if it is a complete breach. And if you refuse, the order will be moved. So there's another section that, do you have it ready, Frank?
Yes, sir.
Okay, don't worry about it. At this point right now, we have citizens to be heard and we have staff who can call off the names, although individuals can call off the phone. Okay?
Yes, sir. We have six in total. The first one will be Mr. Miguel Valverde.
Okay. And for the record, I just want to make sure that I read into the record. I didn't have my mic on. The quorum required stipulation that's in the rules pertaining to disruptive behavior, derogatory remarks, and anything that we rule out of the, by the presiding officer to be removed. Go ahead, sir.
That'll be Miguel Valverde.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm not here to complain. I'm here thanking you for acting on some long overdue issues. Thank you for coordinating with the Bear Metro 911 services and obtaining the non-cost equipment and furniture needed to upgrade our city's dispatch to be capable of providing dispatch services for other municipalities. Hopefully, other cities can be recruited for those services. I understand coordination, the last I heard, I understand coordination with Congressman Costello has taken place for funds of approximately $850,000 to remodel the old community center, pending final approval by the approving authority. Thank you for that. The community center project is way overdue. I want to thank Mr. Everson. I believe last council meeting, he thanked, I want to thank him for wanting to research, review, and update city code ordinances. There are a lot of code violations which need to be addressed to beautify our community, maintain property values, and attract developers. I also want to thank Mrs. Rosa Anderson, whom I know is a dedicated employee and does her best, best to take care of the city issues. If the city hasn't hired a full-time code enforcement officer, I'm sure Mrs. Anderson is working on getting code violations resolved to her best ability. Thank you. I also agree with the door hanger that was passed out a couple of weeks ago about working together to keep our community clean and safe. I also encourage for all public view nuisance code violations from properties to be cleared because it will help maintain property values and possibly lower the city tax rate. There's two major challenges which I have experienced during my council tenure, which are, and it seems that most residents don't agree with code ordinances and don't want to be told what they can and can't do on their own properties. But they don't understand or don't want to understand that code violations are the reason for depreciating property values and creating and unwelcoming deteriorating community. The second challenge is that council members must work together as regulators to regulate some of these conditions. Thank you for allowing me to speak and thank you for your time.
Okay, next we have Jim Koloje. Is that Jimmy Koloje?
Yes.
Does he have an address?
1205 Evening Glen, San Marcos, Texas 7825.
Okay. I'm sure when he comes up, he'll let us know. Mr. Jimmy, if you can, re-pronounce your name again or your name and your address or where you live or your...
My name is Jim Koloje. It's a 100% Polish name and very difficult to spell and say, so what else did you want me to say?
Just your address?
That's it. Okay. 1205 Evening Glen.
1205?
Evening Glen.
Thank you, sir.
San Antonio.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
This will be very brief. I'm here to, to give pat on the back and reference to Cody Blatt and his staff who are the ones who are totally responsible for central finance. Many people have thoughts that finance people are always looking to get the best of everybody. I, I can attest to this fact that I've known them for 30 years.
Mayor, excuse me. I think this is appropriate for the public hearing for item one.
If you deem so, counselor.
You're here to talk about the special use permit for the finance company, correct?
Right.
So that would, that would be for the public hearing.
Good. So I'm sorry, our staff got a little mixed up. If you can just carefully look at the agenda request forms, if it says item number one and that's the item or two, for example. So thank you for catching that, counselor. Appreciate it. No, you can come back. When the item comes up...
Well, when the item comes up, they'll call you back.
Yeah. That when the item comes up, it'll, in the business items, you can come right and finish out your, or restart. We're terribly sorry about that. Mr. Madokin? Go right ahead, sir. I'm sorry. Turn your mic on. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I have three separate ones that are actually going to speak on agenda items.
Okay, and then put those aside and we'll wait for the business items. And right now, citizens to be heard is what we're listening to.
So for the next citizen, it's going to be Robert, no last name, 801 Gentleman?
Okay. We need to have a last name, which I'm sure he'll provide to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, City Council. I have one question for the mayor.
Could you identify yourself again, Robert?
Robert Falk, 801 Gentleman Road.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to know why you're trying to fire the police chief? I mean, that's not a hard question, just why are you trying to fire him?
We are not...
Counselor, would you please respond?
This is not an item that's on the agenda and they're not allowed to respond on items that are not on the agenda. So you, it's your opportunity to speak, but they cannot respond to items that are not on the agenda.
And then I would like to know why you are trying to, that flag right there, the founding fathers was afraid of what y'all are trying to do by limiting our First Amendment speech. That is against the First Amendment, that's against the Constitution. Our founding fathers warned about this, that our government was going to become this. And y'all are trying to stop the First Amendment. You know, if you don't like what to say, cut the mic. That's not right. Y'all know this. I'd like that corrected. Give us a chance. We pay y'all salary. We're the taxpayers. Y'all work for us. We need to tell you what's on our mind. It's nothing bad. I mean, you know, we need some answers. So when is the police chief going to come up on the agenda? He's been trying to fire him. Just tell me when it can come up because I'd like to know why he's trying this. And it's nothing personal.
All I can say is that the chief is out on family medical leave and we, upon his return, he's expected to return back to work.
Yeah, he's not going to be terminated.
I don't know, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Again, we are not allowed to respond to questions that are not on the agenda.
Okay, well, that's a good excuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk.
Next one to speak will be Mr. Juan Lasea.
Okay, Mr. Lasea. Juan Lasea, please state your name and your address, where you live.
Juan Lasea, 223 Ronald Lane. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. It's a little bit confusing this morning, this afternoon, to submit the form because the rules changed from last meeting to this meeting. So I wasn't prepared because the last meeting, we were told one time and one time only. So I didn't individualize the items that I wanted to speak on. What I wanted to speak on is actually on the agenda item where we're limiting our ability to speak. I understand what you guys are doing. I understand that you want to do, do something a little bit different. What I, main comment I want to make is it is called public comment. And that's where we should be allowed to tell you what we feel, what we think is not working for us and what we disagree with. It's unfortunate that the mechanism that we're using is all in the power of one person to shut us down. As, as a council, I think it should be the council's responsibility, not just one person. That, that is the, the main problem that I have. The other thing, concern that I have is because it wasn't passed in the last meeting, we brought it back and put it under your agenda, is that the mechanism we're going to use is just when we don't get what we want, we keep doing it over and over till we get the resolution that we're looking for? I'd like to know if somebody can, can answer, can answer that. Because it was on the last agenda, you didn't get the success that you were looking for, so it's back on the agenda. It, it's troubling to me that, that we're doing that. Other agenda items that we already discussed is the code compliance. That's, that's working. Thank you for, for doing that. And I hope all of us together in unisum will comply and that we treat all residents the same. I know that, that some people have been granted, been granted specific exemptions as part of a campaign promise, they were granted exceptions. I hope that with this new code compliance effort that we're doing, that we go all the way across evenly with everybody and everybody's granted the same opportunity and treated equally. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's it for the public comment. The other three have agenda specific...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Madokin. Thank you very much for those comments. We now will close out the public comment period and we will come to the most exciting and I'm very honored to take the position to make this proclamation. This cancer awareness proclamation is going to be presented to Ms. Mary Duncan. And may I have it, Mr. Mathias? Why have it here? Let me read it from here. So the proclamation reads as such. Mary, let me come up to it. So this recognition and city of Balcony Heights proclamation is in recognition, recognition of Mary Duncan's contribution to cancer advocacy and community service. Mary Duncan has exemplified the highest ideals of civic responsibility through her dedicated commitment to cancer awareness, advocacy, and commitment engagement throughout Bear County. Her tireless efforts in supporting fundraising initiatives, promoting education, and standing in celerity with cancer affected individuals have brought comfort, strength, and hope to many. As a longtime friend of the city of Balcony Heights, Ms. Duncan has actively participated in numerous city events, consistently demonstrating compassion, leadership, and an unwavering dedication to the public good. Her presence in our community reflects the spirit of unity and service that has enriched the lives of those around her. The city of Balcony Heights is proud to acknowledge Mary Duncan for her remarkable contributions to cancer advocacy, her goodwill towards others, and her enduring commitment to making a positive and lasting impact in our city and across Bear County. On behalf of the city council and all those intendants and the citizens of Balcony Heights, I offer our sincere gratitude and recognition for her exemplary services presented on this 28th day of July, 2025 by me, Johnny Rodriguez, Mayor of Balcony Heights. Thank you. Thank you. Stand over here.
Any family would like to speak on their behalf?
Can I, can I get her to speak really quick?
Yes, please. Go right ahead.
That was my next question.
You can get follow-up right now.
Speech, speech, speech. Love to talk.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. It's been a real honor to be presented with this, with this day being my day. It's been a great privilege to be an advocate and survivor of breast cancer. What a roller coaster of a ride it's been fighting cancer and helping others with their battle. Mayor Rodriguez, it's been a true blessing to have you in my corner as a friend and a supporter. Thank you. I also want to thank my family, my friends for being here for me the whole time with my ups and downs, my ins and outs, no matter how much pain I'm in, you would never know because my smile covers, covers it all. You have meant so much to me. I love every one of you and I appreciate you more than you ever know. Thank you for coming out and being here to support and celebrate this special day, which is Mary's Day.
And we will all be praying for you, Mary, that your treatment continues to go well. We know that you have had some very difficult times and I've seen, you know, from where you were to where you're at now, and your smile never goes away and your strength and your courage and will to continue to fight and talk and advocate on those that have cancer or families that have cancer for them to be resilient as well. Thank you, Mary. I'm blessed to be your friend and thank you. Thank you very much, Council. Thank you for your attention. We're going to end with proclamation. We now have the consent agenda items, finance report for the month of June 2025. Any council member would like to address anything particularly to that finance report? I'll give you a moment to get to your finance report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Burton, you have the floor?
Could I get, I don't know if it's Michelle or Lloyd or whoever to comment on what, what do we exactly receive from the, the Texas Monthly? And is this a yearly subscription or a monthly subscription of the $4,000 and change?
Yes, sir. So the, it's part of the hot funds that we have. It's for the destination marketing. So it is, it's an advertisement that's put on the Texas Monthly magazine, the guide. It's also on their website and the San Antonio, the Visit San Antonio as well. So it's a yearly. And then we do a campaign, either a spring or winter campaign for three months of advertising for the city.
So it's, it's quarterly or?
No, it's, it's yearly. That, that's a yearly cost to, and they, they promote the city for the, for the year. It's on, it's part of the magazine and the, and the website.
Okay. Thank you.
You might want to place it on your future business if you want to address it. Councilman Burton? Councilman Sellers, you have the floor?
Lloyd, I have a question with the $14,000 Dell computer setup. Is, is that for the dispatch?
What page is that on, Mr. Sellers? So the staff will know?
Page six.
Page six? Okay. Page six, staff?
Was it $14,000 for the?
No, sir. This is our annual replacement schedule and so that's what that expense would be for.
For the staff?
It's for, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all my, that's all I want.
Any other council members?
I have a question about that.
Councilmember Saul, you have the floor?
Did this come out of, like, do you have an itemized list of, can I see a hard copy of the receipt that was come from this? I'd like to look at the receipt actually and see how it was paid and what we've bought for $14,000.
Certainly.
I'd like, I mean, the actual receipt. And what account does this normally come out of?
General fund.
Oh, the general fund, okay.
Staff, if you can just provide that for him. Appreciate it very much. Anything else, Mr. Everson?
I'm back on the page, you know, whatever page this is. Let me see this right here. It was probably page, probably page one where the deposit for $546 and $173.47. Can you tell me where that number came from?
Sir, are you looking at the check register?
Yes.
Oh, no, you're looking at the investment report?
Yes, the investment report.
And I'm sorry, which number, sir?
546 comma 17347.
Okay, so what you have here is your investment report and what you're looking at there is bank cash for the city. And so every month, of course, we have a beginning balance and an ending balance and it's our main account. And so you're going to see debits and credits. You're going to see deposits and withdrawals, in other words, every month. And so for this, for the month of June, we had a total deposits worth $546,000. And you see there, the total withdrawals were $679,000.
Did the source of income come from for the 546? Was that just like sales tax, property taxes?
All the above, everything.
Everything? And it just goes into the general fund or does it go into a cash account and then moved over to the city?
The city's main primary account doesn't know what fund what is. It's just where we deposit the cash. We only have one cash account. And so regardless of the fund, it goes into the main account onto our, at Frost Bank. And the same for withdrawals, the bank doesn't know what fund it's coming out of. It just looks out there and sees if you have enough money in the bank and it caches the check and on our end in the computer, the accounting system, we, we record it to the correct account or the correct fund.
This is, it's, it's like there is a specific cash account and then its money is, comes in, goes into the cash account, and then we transfer it into the general fund. Is that correct?
Okay, so we're looking at the bank side and the accounting side.
I'm looking at the bank side. How, how does it get to the bank? So the money comes in, goes into the bank, into the cash account, and then out of the cash account, then it comes into the general account.
No, sir. It stays in the bank. And so when we get money in, the money goes to the bank, of course. It's recorded there and it's recorded in our accounting system at the same time or, you know, about the same time. And so that's on the accounting side is, is where we'll designate which fund or what, you know, which revenue line it goes to.
But I mean, didn't, I mean, do you have a specific account where all the money came in? Are there two? I'm trying to figure out if there's two different accounts and then you just transfer money in the, in the bucks, the system, or whether you...
Okay, so whenever there's a deposit, it's recorded in, in the accounting system at that time. But the actual cash, of course, doesn't stay here. It goes to the bank. And so whenever money goes through the bank, it must be recorded in the accounting system.
I know, but I don't, I mean, how, how many accounts do we have that we're using that, I mean, I just don't, it just seems so confusing. I just hear the money is coming in, it goes into the bank and it comes in here and I don't hear any deal details. I hear just generalities of what's going on.
Mr. Everson, if I helped clear up little things. Are we still on the investment account question? Have you now moved on to the actual general operating budget?
Yes.
In general? Okay. So did he answer your question pertaining to the investment pool deposit, where it came from? He mentioned that it was property tax, added alarm tax, and all of the above? It goes into the general operating budget and then it gets deposited into the investment pool and transferred? And if need be, it may be transferred from the investment pool back into the general operating account again or whatever fund he made to use, to use it at, from my understanding. Is that correct, Council? Mr. Messick?
Well, okay, so all the cash is going to go to the bank.
Right.
If there are sufficient funds in the bank at certain points of the year, we can transfer it into the investment pools and then likewise back out of the investment pools in the, in the summer or the fall like we did this month. But yes, there's only one cash account, Mr. Everson, and that's our main account there at Frost Bank. You see a couple other segregated funds there for specific use, but the majority of our cash is going to go into the main account there at Frost and that's what we pay the bills with and whatnot. And that's all the revenue, regardless of what fund it, that comes in, it's going to go into our main cash account.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Everson? Do you have any other questions pertaining to the ledger? Okay, we'll roll back to you. Councilman Adonis, you have anything? Okay. Anyone else? They will wait on for you just a few minutes.
Question?
Anything else? You still have the floor?
It looks like we paid out quite a bit for the Hillcrest Drive reconstruction, the Crestview Phase Two and the Hillcrest emergency, the whatever, whatever sewer repair. So like that, how did that work out that it all landed in this month?
Yes, and so that's a capital project, your street projects. And as you know, for discussion of our budget cycle, these expenses really aren't linear. They, they come in when they come in. As we're finishing up Crestview, you're seeing some of that in there. Hillcrest has been going on, of course, since 2019. And so every month there's engineering or, or some kind of cost that go to Hillcrest. And so that's what's recorded and that's probably just about every month. Crestview Phase Two is finished now, Crestview Phase Three is starting up, and so you're just going to see those.
Any other questions, Mr. Everson? You have the floor? Okay. Yes, Councilman Burton?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the finance report in its entirety.
Motion's been made. Let's second to that motion. We have a second? Okay. Ms. Weaver has seconded the motion. We'll call for any further discussion.
into the bank and it comes in here and I don't hear any details. I hear just generalities of what's going on.
Mr. Ebersol, I helped clear up little things. Are we still on the investment account question? Have you now moved on to the actual general operating budget?
Yes.
In general, okay. So did he answer your question pertaining to the investment pool deposit, where it came from? He mentioned that it was property tax, added alarm tax, and all of the above. It goes into the general operating budget and then it gets deposited into the investment pool and transferred. And if need be, it may be transferred from the investment pool back into the general operating account again, or whatever fund he made to use it at, from my understanding. Is that correct, Councilman?
Well, okay, so all the cash is going to go to the bank.
Right.
If there are sufficient funds in the bank at certain points of the year, we can transfer it into the investment pools. And then likewise, back out of the investment pools in the summer or the fall like we did this month. But yes, there's only one cash account, Mr. Ebersol, and that's our main account there at Frost Bank. You see a couple other segregated funds there for specific use, but the majority of our cash is going to go into the main account there at Frost, and that's what we pay the bills with and whatnot. And that's all the revenue, regardless of what fund that comes in, it's going to go into our main cash account.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Ebersol? Do you have any other questions pertaining to the ledger? Okay, we'll roll back to you. Councilman Adonan, do you have anything? Okay, anyone else? They will wait on for just a few minutes.
Question?
Anything else? You still have the floor?
It looks like we paid out quite a bit for the Hillcrest Drive reconstruction, the Crestview Phase Two and the Hillcrest emergency, the whatever, whatever sewer repair. So like that, how did that work out that it all landed in this month?
Yes, and so that's a capital project, your street projects. And as you know, for discussion of our budget cycle, these expenses really aren't linear. They come in when they come in. As we're finishing up Crestview, you're seeing some of that in there. Hillcrest has been going on, of course, since 2019. And so every month, there's engineering or some kind of cost that go to Hillcrest. And so that's what's recorded, and that's probably just about every month. Crestview Phase Two is finished now. Crestview Phase Three is starting up, and so you're just going to see those.
Any other questions, Mr. Ebersol? You have the floor. Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Burton?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the finance report in its entirety.
Motion's been made. Let's second to that motion. We have a second. Okay, Ms. Weaver has seconded the motion. We'll call for any further discussion. If there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and call for the vote. Ms. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Ebersol?
Aye.
Councilman Adonan?
Aye.
Councilman Sellers?
Aye.
Councilman Burton?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0, no nays. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. There it is. Okay, we'll now move into the business items. Item number one, the city council will hold a public hearing for a special use permit, SUP, financial service, personal loan, Zone C1, local retail, located at 2810 Hillcrest Drive. Legal description is CB 5894A, Block 2, Lot E, 188.82 feet of Lot 20, at the request of Mr. Cody Cliff Company. Mr. Barkey? Do you want to go ahead and call the individuals that have something to say, or we do it after we?
Well, if, I don't know, if staff's going to have a presentation as to the proposal, then the public, then if no more public, then we close the public hearing, then it goes to council.
Do you have a specific presentation for us, sir?
Yes.
Okay, great. Then we'll proceed with that. Moving right along.
Fantastic. So this is going to be the same presentation that I presented for P&amp;Z. Sorry. Good evening, Mayor, the council here. So again, this is going to be the general information that we presented for P&amp;Z. Per our staff report, this was at the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was a 3-2 vote to recommend to city council. Next, please. So we're going to be discussing the property located at 2010 Hillcrest Drive. You can see the property ID, a legal description that we discovered. These two items are distributed by the City County Appraisal District, and this is currently zoned as a C1 local retail. You can see some front side view pictures there of the property. To me, looks to be more well-maintained than in previous years. So Mr. Cliff has been doing some cosmetic improvements here. Aerial view, you'll see that it is right off of Hillcrest, closer to the Babcock intersection, next to Jiffy Louvre, I believe, and Mr. E's Electronics. There's another aerial view within the parcels, so you can see how it's kind of dispersed. It is somewhat of a shared parking lot with Jiffy Louvre, but there is no cutoff of parking between Mr. E's. Next slide, please. So again, current zoning for the proposed location is going to be seen on that black arrow on the bottom left. It is a C1 zoning. Within the area, you're going to see an R1 zoning behind R4, pretty close by with the Gobi Apartments, O1 for the Hillcrest District, and then C1, which would be that closer local retail areas. That would be Jiffy Louvre, Mr. E's, and then the gas station right across from Babcock. So again, we're here as a special use permit. The proposed use is financial services, personal loan. It's identified in Section 15311 as a special use permit required. It is not a permitted use within this current zoning. Currently, the property lot in the building sits vacant, so there is no use as of now, but Mr. Bly is the property owner. But from my understanding, it has been vacant for the past few years. With the special use, this would retain a C1 zoning. There is no rezoning for the property, just a special use within C1. So just wanted to prevent some staff concerns here. As you know, our city plan 2040 is a blueprint and a framework for the city and how we're supposed to follow going forward. This is a plan that we want to achieve or set as a standard or a goal for the city to kind of look forward to in the next 15 years. It does seem far, but it is, you know, something that is slowly built over time. Within page 18 of our city plan, we did many citizen surveys, from what I could tell. It cited a need for local retail restaurants. These local retail restaurants, this is a permitted use, given the C1 local retail zoning. It would not require any special use permit. As well as page 155 of the city plan 2040, the Hillcrest area is really wanting to be oriented as a pedestrian retail residential with wide sidewalks, a more walkable area that's presented within the plan. So this is kind of what the city is using as a framework, like I mentioned, to kind of achieve this within the next 15 years. And I want to clarify that we're not giving any recommendation here, but these are the concerns that us have as staff are kind of seen here. If you have any questions, I'm more than welcome to answer anything. If not, I believe it's public hearing after this.
Any questions by any council members to Mr. Barkey on his staff report?
I just want to clarify in the staff report as well, with fiscal impact, this is not going to provide any sales tax additional to the city. This is not a taxable industry. So there's nothing additional other than the property taxes that are already currently being paid.
Okay, any other comments? Any comments publicly? Okay. Mr. Barkey, thank you very much for your presentation and your hard work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir. So now we have, we've had the public hearing. Is there anybody from the community that's here? Yes.
We still have one for the public hearing.
Okay, so we can go ahead and move forward with that. Let's present the individual. Would you please let us know who it is?
Jim Colloba.
It's James. And he said he was hard to spell, remember? Colloba, Colloba?
K-O-J.
Colloba.
K-O, well, I'll phonetically spell it. K-O-L-O-J-A-Y. K-O-L-O-D-Z-I-E-J. I guess I'd use.
That is hard to pronounce, isn't it?
Use my time up.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Go right ahead. You have the floor.
All right. This property is about 2010 Hillcrest. It's a financial business. I've been blessed with the fact of knowing these folks for 30-plus years, fathers, mothers, sons and daughters. And I'm here to tell you that this business is a financial business which oftentimes has a shadow cash for it, that it's not honorable. It's the exact opposite of, these folks have been in business for over 50 years, serving the people in many cities throughout Texas. Sooner or later, all of us enter a difficult period, whether it be health or financial. These folks offer the assistance in financial areas to get people back on their feet and not cover them up in debt and embarrass them for their situation. In all the years I've known them, central finance, I can attest to you, there's, there's, the first concern is the welfare of the people they're dealing. It's not the final, final dollar amount that this comes up at the end of the year. They're there to help in a Christian way, give them, give people a chance to recover. It's an honorable company. They're serving the community. That's their first concern. And the almighty dollar comes second. Christian beliefs dictate their drive. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Barkey, do we have another one? This item, okay. So council, we'll go ahead and move into executive session.
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, close the public hearing and then go.
Then we call the next item first.
Okay. Excuse me, go ahead and give me the direction again. What did you say?
Once we close the public hearing, you read item two, then at that time you can move to executive.
Okay, great. So the time is 6:40 PM, and we have now closed the public hearing for the special use permit, item number one on business items. We'll move over to item number two. We didn't have a form filled out for it to notify us. What happened?
Was he the applicant? Is that what it is?
Oh, yeah, we'll allow it, no problem.
It's the applicant.
Yeah, even if it wasn't, we'll.
Yeah.
On this particular subject. Go right ahead.
Go ahead.
Who's the applicant? Yes, already it's her.
We back to the public reports.
Yes, we're still, we're still in item number one.
Thank you, council, and good evening, council. You don't hear that too often, right? I sure can. Tonight must be the night for difficult last names. So my last name is Felix Arambula, and in English, it's Arambula. So we are here to present our presentation for the SUP for central finance. Now, I believe in your packet, you received the material which we shared with, at the planning and zoning. And staff was correct, it was a tight vote, three to two. And so one of the main concerns was whether or not we're some type of payday and what type of clients come to our business. And certainly, if you had a chance to read the packet, you will see that we are not that. We are certainly not one of those payday, fly-by-night operations. According to the packet, as we look here, as one of the citizens stated, we've been in business for a number of years. If we can go to the next slide. We've been actually over 30. We're a family business, as I mentioned. We operate Monday through Friday, normal hours, nine to six, nothing shady, working past seven, eight o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night. We're open on Saturday, and we have, allow access to credit for individuals and small businesses who normally do not qualify for loans. And so the loan terms typically are from four to 12 months. And so if we go to the next slide, for the last four years in this area, we've assisted 5,000 people. And many of these people have been teachers and nurses and law enforcement with loans and trying to rebuild their credit. As he stated, a second chance. Everybody deserves a second chance, and my client allows that opportunity. We intend to locate here in the city, which I think falls into what the plan calls for, the 2040 plan, certainly trying to build the community, build development, provide jobs. Currently, at present, three of our employees actually reside here. And so they'll be coming home to come to work, and we intend to use that property that, which we own, there's no landlord, and we're going to use that as our corporate office, with the front being when the loan process in the back, corporate headquarters. Certainly, and hopefully with the growth that we're anticipating within the city, we'll bring in new jobs, bring in new people. And certainly, that falls in line with your 2040 plan, as I looked at it on the website. We go to the next slide. So as we look at the slide here, this is not the first time that we've been before, council. And I think Councilman Burton at that time wasn't on council, but did have a concern about whether or not it's a payday type of business. And hopefully, Councilman Burton, he had a chance to take a look at the material and realize as you went through the PowerPoint that we are not that. And so back in 2022 was approved unanimously by P&amp;Z, but not approved by the council back in 2022, in all fairness. And that was, the concern was, we're a payday operation. But as I stated, if you look in your, in their PowerPoint presentation, we clearly wanted to make sure, we're not a pawn shop. We don't do title loans. We don't garnish wages when they don't pay. And we're not a payday loan company at all. And so when we go to the slides next, on the next slide, ma'am, here we are. We're at Chapter 3042F. We help rebuild someone's credit. The rates are much lower than any payday lending operation, and there's no collateral. Versus the other side, which I think Councilman Burton and I think Councilman Ebersol was concerned with back when he was on the P&amp;Z meeting earlier this month, was whether or not we were a payday. And so we are not that. Payday does not affect the credit score, only affects the unpaid, no benefit for on-time payments, and extremely higher rates than what we offer for those individuals simply trying to get a second chance. Next slide, please. And so when we look at the key differences, and again, we are different. We are not a payday. We have an installment loan, repaid over time, fixed monthly payments with a loan term of four to 12 months versus the payday, single payment loan, a balloon payment, full repayment on next payday, typically less than a month. So certainly, we provide a great opportunity for those folks just wanting to get a second chance. And so one of the things that I certainly wanted to make sure is that my client owns that building. They have great customers that come in. There's, I know there was some concern at the P&amp;Z of the type of the clientele. The clientele is the hard-working people, nurses, teachers, law enforcement, just looking for a second chance to help rebuild their credit, which I think everybody deserves. And so certainly, as I, as I mentioned, I believe your 2040 plan did talk about trying to bring in new jobs, which I think this company will certainly do. And then one of the things that I saw, too, was trying to address vacant and neglected property. Currently, right now, that property's vacant. But with the approval of council, we'll have a business in there, one that's giving back to the community. And that's what it's all about, giving back to the community, affording opportunities for your citizens and the local residents in and around the greater San Antonio Metrocom. And certainly, we would be hopeful that you would approve the SUP so we can move our business here and be part of the community even further. And with that, I'll stand for any questions, or actually, if we go to the action items, then we'll have some questions if we have any. But I didn't know if you wanted to hear from Mr., from my client, Mr. Cody here, but certainly, we're here to address any concerns council may have. I think after our P&amp;Z meeting, one of your council members, Mr. Ebersol, came actually to our business shortly thereafter, trying to ease some of his concerns. And I'm hopeful those were eased, and I'm sure during comment and debate, he may have something to say. Hopefully, it's good things, which we believe it will be.
Thank you, Mr. Arambula.
Thank you.
Counselor.
My name's Cody Bly. Just wanted to say that I am the owner of Central Finance, and I love to answer any questions or concerns anybody may have.
Anybody have any questions? Do we take them now, Frank, or in the next, close out, and then we go into the next one? Any other public comments from anyone else? Please stand up to the podium and again, recite your name and address where you live, please, just for, just for the record.
Robert Falk. Y'all talk really good. I guarantee you this, you almost had me stalled. What's your interest rate on the loan today?
I actually brought a contract because I figured that question would come up that way.
Yeah. Frank, should we take any, in the back and forth right now? Okay. Do you feel comfortable with that, or we do it in?
Yeah.
I like to know the answers.
Please go right ahead.
Yeah, it's a blank contract. I've whited out all the names or whatever it may be. But a $200 loan is basically, I'd say, a pretty good indication of what we do when people first come in. So I also brought this card with me that can really, yeah, you can pass these out, actually. Anytime that the APR comes up within our business, I always tell people to look at the dollar amount that we actually charge, because when you're talking about an APR, we don't do annual loans. So when you're talking, you know, a five or six-month loan, the APR is always going to look ballooned because it's not an annual loan. So I printed these cards out that can maybe explain that a little bit better. But for instance, on a $200 loan, the interest charge on that loan is $73, and they pay that back in six months.
On $200, it's $73.
$73.
Okay, so what is the interest rate?
It's right here.
It's 117 interest rate. Y'all get that. Y'all get that.
I want to, I want to clarify that because again, with somebody that is not knowledgeable in what we do, I would like to kind of answer that question. And it goes back to the fact that it's not an annual loan. When you're talking about APR, and if you'll just read this card, what does it really measure, cost or time? Let's say you borrow $100 and agree to pay a dollar in interest. That seems fair, right? What is the APR of the agreed-upon $1 in interest charge? If you're talking 12 months, it's only 1%. If you're talking one month, that's 12%. If you're talking one week, that's 52%. If you're talking one day, right? Even if I let you borrow $100, you pay me back, and one day I say, you got to give me 101, that's 365% in APR. Again, because we don't do four, five-year loans. Again, because we don't do four, five-year loans, that, that's where, if I had a rate like that at a three-year loan, I can understand, that's crazy. But the finance charge that you see there on the contract, the seventy-three dollars, we don't charge more than that. Obviously, there's, there's gonna be late fees if you're late, I give my customers ten-day grace period from their due date. So there is a ten-dollar fee if they do not pay, you know, after the ten days grace period that I provide to them, there is that ten-dollar late charge. But the seventy-three dollars does not change, that is the charge for a two hundred dollar loan. Again, if you're, if you're giving two hundred dollars out of your pocket, and you're gonna make seventy-three dollars, and it takes you six months to do that, I'm sorry, but the argument to me would be, I think that's decently fair if I'm gonna help you rebuild your credit, is how I look at that. And of course, we are gonna always be a little bit higher than maybe a bank or a credit union. But I, I tell my customers all the time, as soon as your credit gets back on track the way you wanna have it, or you're just starting out your credit, I go to a credit union, right? Because that, that's the goal here, so that they can go to a credit union and get a five thousand dollar loan to do whatever they may need to do. But there's so many people that walk through my doors that thank me every single time because they can't get credit anywhere else, because they either have none, or they maybe lost their job at some point, which is usually how that works out. And then they, their credit's shot because they can't pay off, maybe it's their car, credit card, whatever it may be. And I loan them a, a small amount of money to be able to reestablish that. And I have customers that have been with me for a very long time that, that can attest to that as well. But yeah, I, I think this card hopefully clears that up, or the contract.
Well, as one that's been down the rabbit hole, I'm gonna tell you this much. You talk really good, I mean, you really do, you almost had me sold except for this card right here. It basically states that they can charge whatever they want.
No, 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 that's not true.
Mr. Falk, if we can just adhere to just asking the questions that you'd like to ask.
I'd like to answer that.
But I don't want to get into a tit-for-tat arguing with each other.
Like I said.
Arguing with them.
They're planning on building this thing in the low-income area of y'all's city. There's a reason for that, because people buy into this, and they get into this. But it's in the low-income area, it's where people are hurting for cash. They go in, hey, man, can I borrow a hundred bucks, and they can't pay it back for, say, six months. Hundred and seventeen percent interest. Think about it, guys, that's not good.
Again, we are regulated by the state of Texas, I can't charge whatever I want. This was just a simple example of why do you look at an A P R rate for a loan that is not an annual loan, rather than look at the actual finance charge that I charge? I don't charge it, the state tells me that's what I'm allowed to charge.
Mr. Falk, we're at three minutes already, sir.
Well, we'll see if it works out.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate y'all.
Your input.
And just for the record, we're not building anything, it's already there. We're just simply moving our corporate headquarters to hopefully this beautiful city, so.
Great. Mr. Falk, I'll give you a couple of seconds just to refute anything if you want to, just in fairness. Yep, just a couple of seconds though, and then that'll be in the, yeah, that'll be in, because I gave him a last statement.
I appreciate they want to move their, the business to our beautiful city, and I promise you, it is beautiful, but there's a reason why they want to move to that area. I'm sorry, but there is.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Any other comments?
No questions until we close the public hearing, then we get to the other item.
Right, then we have questions in there. Okay, so if there is no other, under the public hearing, any comments, then we will close it in the time. Now, we will correct it to six fifty-four P M to document that, and we now will go into item number two. Consider an action to adopt an ordinance approving the establishment of a special use permit for the property currently zoned C-one Local Retail Zoning District to operate as a financial services, personal loan use. Mr. Varka, did you want to come up, or you're good? Okay, Mr. Hernandez, you would like to make some comments?
I would like to ask a question, the gentleman with the A and M, yeah, come back up.
He's, he's an attorney.
You're an attorney, okay, that was my question, you referred to him as your client, what is your role?
I'm an attorney, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm not as best as good as your current counsel.
Anything else, Mr. Hernandez? He, okay, Mr. Sellers, you have a question?
Yes, and I'm not sure who can answer this, but on the page of the staff report under fiscal impact, it says the city would not receive any additional sales tax. So my question is, define additional, do you pay taxes where you're at now? Are you gonna pay taxes where you're moving, or you're not gonna pay taxes where you're moving? What, what, what is that, additional?
I, I just want to identify, there's currently no sales tax that will be present on here. It is not a taxable industry or taxable service.
They're not paying sales tax where they're at now?
No, sir.
And they won't pay it when they're moving?
There will not be any sales tax at the current location in Balcony Sites, they're currently located off Fredericksburg Road, we're not making any sale tax off of that, the, the city receives. In the new location, there would not be any sales tax. The only taxable income that the city will receive is through property taxes.
All right, and, and any other questions, I'll, I'll turn it over.
Yeah, I'll turn it over, sir, go right ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, of course, we already are on Fredericksburg Road, a mile down the road, it's not to open up a second location, it's just simply to move out of there, we've been there forever, and I'll move it to the building that I had purchased.
Yes, sir. Thanks for telling us that. Any other questions? No, we can ask, you can ask questions now, then we'll have an executive. Yes, there'll be an executive session, and I'll call.
I have another question, Mayor.
Yes.
So you said you're a mile down the road, where?
Forty-four hundred Fredericksburg Road, we're in that shopping center, we're like Peter Piper Pizza, Planet Fitness.
So you're already in Balcony Site?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We've been here for decades.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Hernandez. Any other questions before we? Councilwoman.
So in essence, you're just moving?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're here already?
Correct.
Decade.
And, and what are you gonna do at that location you're at now?
It's strictly the same thing I do at the other location, it, it's, it's gonna be ran as the business of Central Finance, and then I'd like to have somewhat of a home office.
Two, two, two businesses then?
No, ma'am, no, no, I, I run the current business there, it's just a home office, right, it's kind of in quotes there, I'd like.
You're renting from the little district area that you're in?
Right now, yes, ma'am.
You don't own it?
No, ma'am, but where I.
Want to own this, this piece of?
I, I have purchased this, and I've.
You want to go from rental to ownership?
Exactly, yes, ma'am, that was always been the goal, which I'd imagine for most people.
All right.
As he stated, he owns the building right now, it's vacant, but if you saw through the pictures, through staff and the reporting, it's a very nice building. It kept up very well over the last couple of years while we waited, hopefully to get this moved within the city. We're not doing it, we're not outsiders, we're not anything like that, we're not predatory, we just want to move down the road, be a little closer. And so, but that property is owned by him.
I like. Yes, ma'am.
He owns that building.
Okay.
That's his property, yes, ma'am.
I have another question.
I think he wanted to say something, go ahead.
No, all I was stating was I, I would like to give the, the building a facelift, it would make the street look nicer.
Go ahead, Mr..
So your current location, when the lease is up, are you, is your intention to not renew that lease, or you are gonna renew the lease?
I, I will renew the lease if, obviously, if this is not getting approved out of.
Oh, if this is approved?
If this is approved, no, 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 we're, we move here.
You're moving.
You know, that would be a blessing.
You're not gonna have two locations if.
No, sir, it's just one, it would be one location, yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Hernandez. Any other questions before we go into executive session? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, so the, yes, go right ahead.
I think Councilman Burton.
Councilman Burton, did you have something?
You, you said there's a benefit to the city, other than that of alarm, what is, what is that benefit?
To me, it would be to help our community with credit, and if they need the cash, you know, you have somebody there to give it to them that nobody would.
Not giving it to them.
Well, you understand what I mean.
Yes.
He's in business.
Early councilman, it's an opportunity for those folks that need that, second opportunity to kind of help themselves out. You know, we've all been in those situations, and so certainly, having a business that's local, that's certainly been here for a long time, helping the community to, and just, they just want to move. That's it, they've been doing it for years, it's just, we would, we just want to change the location to a better building, one that we own, versus having to pay the rent where we're at, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burton. So if, for the purposes of the community, an executive session is a session that we go behind closed doors, and we ask the public to either wait outside for us while we conduct this meeting, shouldn't take us very long, and then we'll call the meeting back, and then there will be a vote taken, there may be a little bit more discussion. We should be ready to vote on it by then, or no vote, I don't know what, that the council decides, they're the governing body. So from that point, we will open into open session, if you're still here, you can come back in, and we will continue in an open meeting. So the time right now is going to be seven P M. If everyone wants to take a quick little two-minute, three-minute break, go to the restroom, or we jump into.
In the record that we're going, executive session to discuss item two.
So let me go ahead and verbalize it.
You're, you'll be using.
The language here.
The attorney-client consultation provision.
Okay, great. So the time again is seven P M, and under the attorney-client consultation provision, we will be discussing item number two, consideration and action to adopt an ordinance approving the establishment of a special use permit for the property currently zoned C-one Local Retail Zoning District to operate as financial services, personal loan use. And that will be done in an executive session, and then we will open back into open session right away. Thank you for all that are here that may not make it back, thank you for being here, and we will call you in just a little bit and have the bailiff call y'all back in. Hey, the time is now seven thirty P M, and we now take action, consideration of the action item number two, under business items, consider an action to adopt an ordinance approving the establishment of a special use permit for the property currently zoned C-one Local Retail Zoning District to operate as financial services, personal loan use. Counsel, what say you? Councilman Burton?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Okay, Councilman Burton has made a motion to deny the item number two, do we have a second to Councilman Burton's motion? Okay, uh, do we have a second?
Our second.
Councilman Ebersol, second's that motion, now let's go ahead and call for a discussion, who wants to start the discussion first? Councilman Burton?
Uh, just, just the points that I, I'd like to bring up to, to the council, and I need to find them again, sorry. I think I've got them memorized anyway. It's, I, I look at it as it's an entrance to the city, it doesn't fit our twenty forty plan. We're getting ready to spend, I don't know how many million, on Hillcrest to revitalize that. And I, I, and it does not bring in any sales tax, zero. So those are my key points.
Okay, who else? Any other input from any council member? Okay, so we have had a motion for the vote, there's no other discussion, let's go ahead and call for a vote, Councilman Burton. Yay?
Yay.
Okay, yay to deny. Councilman Sellers, yay or nay to deny?
Nay.
Okay. Sellers is, Mr. Councilman Sellers is nay. Councilman Hernandez, how do you vote?
Yay.
Okay, Councilman Ebersol, how do you vote?
Yay.
Uh, Councilmember Weaver, how do you vote?
Nay.
So we have two nays. You said nay, is that correct? Okay, so we have two nays, and we have three yays. Motion carries three to two, is that correct?
Two to deny.
Okay, and no nays, oh, excuse me, two nays. Okay, thank you very much. Gentlemen, council, thank you for your time on this, yes.
I think Councilman Ebersol should abstain from that, should have abstained from that vote, because his business is right next door to what proposed right now.
Okay.
And so I, I believe under Roberts will teach him to abstain from the vote, and I'm happy to provide a support funds to that effect, so you and Mr. Garza can take a look.
Absolutely, Mr. Garza.
He should have abstained.
Okay.
Certainly, he can discuss his position on it, but he.
Now, if he's required to abstain by law, he should not have also discussed. And if, if I remember correctly, during your presentation, you specifically invited Mr. Ebersol to vote and discuss on the matter.
When I said what he can give discussion on the item that he visited in state of vote. So let me go ahead and pass you the correspondence, go and take a look at that, but certainly, we believe he should have abstained.
That should, then that should have been made your presentation at the beginning, and under Roberts' rules, there is nothing under Roberts' rules for abstentions. No, sir, no, under chapter one seventy-one Local Government Code is what you should have made an argument for, but you did not make a chapter one seventy-one argument. So Roberts' rules. That's correct, and Roberts' rules does not mandate you abstain.
Thank you, sir, well.
You should have brought this up before the vote, you should have brought this up before the vote.
Okay, Mr. Arambula, thank you very much, sir, we'll read the correspondence, and our council will respond accordingly. And thank you very much both for your time, yes, sir. Okay. So let's go to item number three, I mean, let's see here, yes, item number three, the city council will hold a public hearing for the balcony sites crime control and prevention district proposed annual operating budget for the period of October first, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And council members, I'll remind you, we have, right now, it's seven, gonna be seven forty. So we want to move around pretty quickly on this, this should be a no-brainer, unless you have some dedicated questions for Mr. Messick. He pretty much covered it in the last budget hearing, but if you have any other questions, please, I'm, I'm all ears to entertain, recognizing any council member.
So, yeah, number three is the public hearing, number four is the vote, do we need to open the public hearing, Mayor?
Okay, you want to go ahead, Mr. Messick, do you have a presentation?
I, I do, but I didn't know if you needed to open it.
Go right ahead, and then, then council can go ahead and ask you any questions they may have.
So council, back in June, when you guys were wearing your hat as district members for the crime control district, you passed the budget. That very same night, you, you accepted it wearing your council people's hat. Uh, tonight, by local government code, we have to bring it back for you guys to formally approve the budget. Like the mayor said, this is really a matter of formality, as you guys are the board and the council, so it's really not that, it's more of a procedural thing that we have to do. Uh, so for the public hearing portion of it, just to remind you of what you did last month, you passed a balanced budget for one million seventy-eight thousand eight hundred dollars, both revenues and expenses, the budget was balanced with nearly a three-month fund balance. Uh, and those expenses, nine hundred and seventeen thousand seven seventy-four were for personnel costs, which is roughly forty-five percent of the total payroll for the police department, and, or about eight positions. There's also a hundred and sixty-one thousand for justice center operation and maintenance expenses. You were also given a line item budget that shows how these break down. And, and again, the thing to know is that very good fund balance, revenues equal expenses, it's a balanced budget. Uh, of course, now this budget, once it's accepted, goes into the overall city budget, where we negotiate that over the summer. So that's much be for agenda number three. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Messick, council? Mr. Burton, you have a floor?
This is pretty much what we covered earlier in, in the crime control.
Yes.
Meeting, and we are healthy fund balance, two months behind on sales tax.
Yes, and what we did earlier was a quarterly report, but this is what y'all did last month, when, this is the same budget that you passed. Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions from any council members? What is the wish of the city council to move forward on this?
Uh, I guess you have to close the.
Yes, we're gonna, okay, and then we'll go into the same thing, all right, so the time is now seven thirty-eight P M, we're gonna close item number four on the public hearing, and we will now move into item number five.
All right, Mayor.
Excuse me, consider an action to adopt a resolution on item, we moved from item number three, and we're now moving to item number four, is correct? Consider an action to adopt a resolution approving the, per year date twenty twenty-five, balcony sites crime control and prevention district budget. Anything else, Mr. Messick, you'd like to add?
No, sir, unless you have questions.
Counsel, how would you like to act on this?
I'd like to move to make a motion to approve.
Okay, Councilman Burton has moved to approve this particular budget, do we have a second to?
Our second.
Councilman Sellers is second. Okay, now, we have any further discussion, any other questions from anyone? Any other questions from anyone? Okay, let's go ahead and call for the vote. Councilmember Weaver to approve the budget. Okay, Councilman Ebersol?
Aye.
Councilman Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilman Sellers?
Aye.
Councilman Burton?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the, uh, 2025 balcony sites crime control and prevention district budget. Thank you, Mr. Messick, for your time. Now we have item number five. And so we have consider an action to adopt a resolution approving the year date of 2025 balcony site, uh, excuse me, um, to amend the council relations policy related to citizens' comments at meetings. This is councilmo, Councilman Hernandez's agenda item. So do we have, Mr. Muddicking, any people?
Yes, sir, we have two.
Okay, great. So I'd like to remind those that are gonna be coming up to speak because of the past individuals that have been coming up to the city council disrupting meetings, having to be removed from the city council chambers. Um, strict adherence to decorum, when your time is up, um, you shall remove yourself from the podium. And if you do not, then you would be in possible violation of section 4205, which prohibits disrupting or interfering with, um, any meetings under the Texas Penal Code, obstructing or interfering with any lawful meeting, procession, or gathering either through physical action or verbal utterance with intent to prevent or disrupt it. So there'll be zero tolerance for that and the chair will make a ruling on you. And now there will be consequences to pay under the local, um, penal code, section 4205.
Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be okay for me to make the presentation first and then them?
Absolutely, but before I want to speak-
Okay.
I want to make sure. Okay, go ahead, Councilman Hernandez, you have the floor. Oh, Jimmy, you can run it from here if you'd like, but is it better if you're there? Screen, he's not making comments. No, no, he's not, he's not marking as a citizen. He's just dictating the powerful-
Yeah.
Then when they come up and want to talk as like citizens to be heard, taking their head off as a council member and putting it in public, can't do that.
I, I added the item to the agendas and I'm making the presentation. I think that's the difference, but, well, good evening, um, mayor, fellow councilmen and citizens that are present and citizens that may be viewing at a later time on the recorded video. First off, to answer, uh, Wanda Seiya's question about is this the way we're gonna conduct business, bringing things back on? You know, uh, I had already prepared and planned to bring this on the regular council meeting. When we had the special meeting last week, my wife had a, um, surgery plan and so I was not able to attend. Had I been here, I would have made a motion to amend. And so I just really felt like, um, you know, we needed to address these issues. Um, so we'll go ahead and with the presentation, if you will, Ms. Muddicking. So, um, currently the background is, you know, the city allows residents comments on non-agenda items and agenda items. And, uh, recent meetings, we've had been delayed and had extended public comments. And, and here's the thing, in previous meetings, we've been here till like past 10:30 at night and what has happened is former city leaders, former city leaders, uh, have come up here with, I'm gonna say, uh, a planned agenda and every, every agenda item has been, um, I'm gonna say takes three minutes. We had like, uh, over 10 different agenda items, so that means essentially there was no time limit. Each person that came up to speak ultimately could speak up to 30 minutes or possibly more and you guys got into cahoots and really, you know, trying to control or, or, or take the direction of the meeting. And I don't think that that's what the public comment period is about. And so what I wanted to do is put something in place that allows citizens to be heard and have ample time to talk, but put a structure in place that we're able to have a smooth-flowing conducive meeting and not be, you know, ransacked by former city, uh, leaders. And so, uh, that's really the basis of this. So, you know, we had no clear, currently we have no clear maximum time for individual comments. Uh, we've had repetitive and lengthy remarks, uh, ex, to extend the meeting. Uh, I think we need a balance. Um, also, the other thing is too, is that we kept having citizens coming back to the podium and then going back and forth with council and totally like trying to control the meeting. And so that needs to end. We need to have a, a smooth-flowing council. So next, next, thank you. So our objective is to ensure fair participation, opportunities for all, maintain efficient, focused council meetings and incorporate flexibility for special circumstances. Uh, next slide, please. And so I propose that we have a maximum of six minutes per individual per meeting and this applies to all public comments. So whether it's the citizens to be heard, a non-agenda item, or if it's an actual agenda item, the total amount would be six minutes. And those times could, you know, I guess you can say be granted or extended across both platforms there. Uh, so my proposal is to have up to three minutes for non-agenda items and up to three minutes for agenda items. Um, as I just mentioned, we can allocate that time, you know, so if you sign up for both, uh, if there's any extra three minutes that may be granted by the, the chairman or council vote, uh, it still would not exceed the six limit, uh, six-minute limit for the, for, for the total meeting per person. Next slide, please. So I believe that this promotes a fair and equal access to all speakers, prevents excessive delays and repetitive comments, it supports efficient, orderly council meetings and aligns with best practices in municipal governance. So council approval of proposed, or rather, the next step is council approval of proposed challenges, changes in concept. If approved, we'll ask the city attorney to draft a formal amendment language and council will review and adopt the formal ordinance. So I request for a motion to pass the proposed amendment. And that's what I have for you today.
Thank you, Councilman Hernandez, very well prepared and very clear and concise in your, um, explanation and reasoning behind your presentation. Um, I think, um, we are gonna go ahead and take the citizens to be heard now, not citizens to be heard, but citizens to be heard on the items.
Yes, sir, we got Lamar Gillian, 24 Glen Arm.
Mr. Lamar Gillian, please, come up to the podium.
Huh? I'm gonna try to stand erect if I can. I'm gonna try. My name is Lamar Gillian, I live at 324 Glen Arm and thank you for hearing me today. I hope you can hear this, I'm gonna try to do something here on my computer if it'll work. Yeah, it worked. This was taken from a special council meeting and it's a minute and 25 seconds and I invite you to hear what I, what I heard.
Yeah, if he wants to utilize-
I can also have the council, have the authority. If we see this legitimate question that they have, by all means, but- citizens to be heard and items on the agenda, then they are now taking advantage of that particular right and like Mr.-
I've got a few comments to follow up. What you said earlier, limiting to any amount of time, I think it's unjust. I think we understand the real reason you do it because of the comments of Weaver. If we agree with what they say, we're gonna let them off.
Do we have another citizen that'd like to be heard? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, Mark Sines, 501 balcony site road.
Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, before I begin, um, I'd like to have a clarification from the city attorney, if I may, uh, before my three minutes starts.
Uh, he has his three minutes running right now, so go ahead and start him.
Thank you. So my question to the, uh, city attorney, if you can, briefly, are citizens allowed to, um, repeat things that council members or the mayor have said in the past and is that considered a personal attack?
Personal attacks are interpreted by the presiding officer, which can be overruled by the council as a whole. Usually repetition of a state in the past is not an attack. Um, the open meetings law does allow for public to criticize actions and policies of governing body, but not allowed to criticize an individual.
Thank you. So, again, I want to ring forth this opinion that was stated by Ken Paxton during the previous meeting, during the discussion, uh, there were questions about whether or not it applied to the city council and it does state, it does apply to all, all other local government bodies listed in section 551.013, including, dah dah dah, city councils. So the, the attorney general's opinion does apply to city councils. And I would encourage you all just to consider the, the reasoning behind this, this, this agenda item that has been put forth. Um, again, I do believe it infringes on our First Amendment rights because it is limiting our ability to speak. You should not try to quash opinions based on whether or not you agree with them or disagree with them. Uh, you should afford every citizen the opportunity to speak on any agenda item that they wish for a reasonable amount of time. So if there's five agenda items or six agenda items and you're limiting them to three total minutes, you're giving them 30 seconds per. And Mr. Hernandez, your presentation was very well stated, uh, it took you well over three minutes to do. Okay, so for somebody to provide, um, the reason why they're for or against something usually takes more than 30 seconds. So I would encourage you all to consider that as you're doing this. I will also state that during the previous, uh, mayoral election, one of the candidates was campaigning on the fact that he believed that the former mayor was, uh, restricting citizens' rights and ability to speak by limiting them to three minutes. And in fact, that, that person campaigned on extending the amount of time that people would be allowed to speak. So I would encourage you all to consider that amongst your discussion, why in that shift to shift in positions. It's, it's not just a little shift, it's 180 degrees from expanding their, their ability to speak, getting spending that time and campaigning on that to now wanting to restrict people and as Ms. Weaver said, if we don't agree with it, we'll just cut them off. So I will, uh, yield back my time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. Uh, no other comments? Okay, great.
Mayor, if I can provide some background?
Absolutely, thank you, sir, please.
So prior to 2019, the public was, could not, the public by law was not allowed to speak if the public, if the entity did not allow it to speak. Most cities and government entities, of course, always had public comment to let the public speak, but they were not required to speak. In 2019, the legislature said that the public must be allowed to speak on agenda items. They cannot be prohibited from speaking on agenda items. In 2019, 551071, entitled members of the public to speak about items on the agenda at meetings of certain government bodies. The debate was whether or not they should speak at the item or at the beginning of the meeting. The attorney general said that is at the discretion of the governing body to allow to speak at the beginning of the meeting or at the agenda item. We allow both. We allow public comment and we allow individuals to speak. The law also is very clear, 551071C says it expressly authorizes the governing body to adopt reasonable rules regarding the public's right to address the body, including rules that limit the total amount of time that a member of the public may address the body on a given item. It specifically says that the governing body may set time limits. Now, one thing that I may, must make clear, whether you adopt a three-minute limit or a six-minute limit, if there is a public hearing that's mandated by state law, your limitation does not apply to that public hearing item. For example, we had two public hearing items tonight. One was it adopting the, the, the SUP and one was the crime control. If I had used my six minutes during public comment and another item, you could not prohibit me from speaking on a state-mandated public co, public hearing matter. So if I understand your proposal, Councilman Hernandez, is six limits would be the time limit that a member of the public would be able to speak on agenda items, but that six-minute limitation would not apply to state-mandated public hearings. Whether it's the budget or a zoning case or one of those items, they would still be allowed their three-minute time limit, uh, to speak. Now, I have seen when 40 people show up for a public item where the mayor limits the three minutes to two minutes because of the number of people who've signed up and the council has the right to overrule the mayor or agree with the mayor on going from three minutes to two limits, two minutes. Again, the state law is very clear that the city can limit the amount of time the public has a right to speak at a meeting. It is not a constitutional violation. I went through this argument in 1997 when the city of San Antonio adopted its first limitations on how often a citizen could speak. It went through the courts, it was, it was, uh, in favor of the city that as long as the time limits were reasonable and as long as they didn't favor one group over another and the time limits were applied to everyone equally, then the court upheld the city's ruling. So again, it is a decision of the council. This is one of the things that I would truly say is a total policy decision of the council, whether to adopt limits or not to adopt limits. But again, they must be reasonable and treat it fairly whether someone's speaking against or in favor of an item.
Thank you, Mr. Garza, that was excellently put, very informative and very factual. And that's what we needed. No, sir, we were finished with our discussion.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak as a citizen? Okay, I'll speak as a council.
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. Here in balcony heights, we welcome everyone to have their say. That's the Texas way and the American way too. Whether you're use, raising a concern or you just want to speak your piece, the microphone in City Hall is open to all. But let's be honest, sometimes it's the same folks every time. Former officials with a lot of opinions, but not always a lot of, of new, new ideas. And when the same employees are, take over every meeting, it can work then. It doesn't help the community to move forward and it doesn't leave space for others to speak. That's why we've got the time and the place and manner rules. They keep things fair and orderly so everyone gets a turn and the business of the city can still get done. We're not asking folks to agree, we're just asking them to show the same respect that they would expect sitting across the neighborhood at gyms. Speak your mind, absolutely. Just don't make the mistake, the council chamber for a soapbox that never closes. Around here, we got work to do and that includes making sure every voice is heard. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Weaver, very well put.
I have a question for Frank. The, the ordinance that you drafted up that was at our last city council meeting, the special council meeting, does that break First Amendment rights? Because that, I, I, I got ripples through the neighborhood that we were, we were, uh, breaking the First Amendment rights that, by setting time limits.
Again, state law is very clear under the Open Means Act.
Other than, other than, um, what is it, the, um, public hearings, other than the public hearings, uh, are we breaking people's First Amendment rights?
No, sir. Again, chapter, section 551007- chapter, section 551007 specifically states that a governing body, which is the city council, can set reasonable time limits for speakers. And that is my understanding. Now, what is reasonable? That is up for the governing body to decide what is reasonable. As I mentioned earlier, when 40 citizens showed up to speak on a matter, the mayor thought it would be reasonable to go from three minutes to two minutes. Now, this is not your, this mayor, this is another city. But and the council agreed because of the number of citizens that had shown up to speak. Your rules, it's your policy. This is strictly a policy. Is it against the law? No, sir, it is not. Set 551007C makes it clear that the council can set reasonable time limits. The one thing, it is very clear though, the law says you cannot favor one group over another. The rules must apply to all.
I do know that when I served on council before, when we were up there, the time limit was two minutes. It was set by two minutes. And I used to, there was a black gentleman that stuttered a lot. And and he would, he would talk to try to to get his two minutes in and it would be, you got 30 seconds left and he would stutter even more. And you got 15 seconds, he would stutter even more. And I felt so bad for that gentleman. And that's why I wanted to make, I ran on, I think that's who Mr. Sines is referring to, is me, that I ran on, I wanted citizens to be heard. And and I do want citizens to be heard, but I don't, I don't need a scolding either. I need constrictive, instructive, what would you like kind of conversations other than blame, blame, blame. It's I mean, it's your prerogative if you want to get up there and do that. But that's, that's, I think what Mr. Hernandez has set forth in that presentation is, is come on, guys, let's smoke a peace pipe. Let's, 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 I'm sorry. Allow, yeah. And and let's, let's stop this because it, it is, it is you guys and it's constantly you guys.
Excuse me.
No.
I yield. Can I make a motion?
So do we have a motion on the floor to adopt Councilman Hernandez's presentation and the six-minute rule that he has proposed?
But I would like also the information to reference the 551071C and also the public hearing language in there as well, so for clarity, so that people will see that the codes are there and it's written a little more like this is why. I just want people to know clarity. This is why we're doing this and this is the clarity.
And as the mayor of this community, I just want to say that I have been more than fair in the past with allowing time. And what happened, it just got abused. And in order for us to just continue in an efficient manner, we're just trying to not allow unfettered access. Everyone has had their right to speak. No one has ever been denied the right to come to the podium and speak. They've always been able to finish unless they've gotten, you know, where they are attacking people or anything like that. And other than that, they've always been allowed to express themselves. But until it gets personal and they start pointing fingers and making it a personal attack and vendetta, and we realize as a governing board that some people will just not stop. They don't see the damage that they're doing to their community by doing that. They propose to make up things that are not true. And so when that happens, they can still come and speak as much as they want, as long as they do it in an orderly way and they're not personally attacking anyone. They can criticize their government all they want. That is a God-given constitutional right or constitutional right to everybody. But don't abuse it. Don't start attacking people. Let us conduct our business. Let us try to make the change that the citizens want. The citizens have advocated and they have made a very loud voice in the election. And that reason was for people to be able to make a change. And that's the way our government works, like it or not. Sometimes you're on the winning side, sometimes you're on the losing side. You just have to work together because in all, we're a community. We are a community as a whole. And when the chips fall down, we have to help each other in one way or another, whether we like each other or not. And we have to provide that respect for each other. But respect given is respect taken. So you have to give it to receive it. And so if we can, as Jack said, let's come together. Let's smoke that peace pipe and let's work as a common good to make our community better. Thank you very much for that, Billy. No, Mr. Gillian.
All I can say is I know what that woman said.
Outside of
We want people to talk that we agree with.
Meeting, sir, out, out. That's exactly what we're talking about right there. Thank you for exemplifying to the public that's watching on the camera and everybody in this, in this building. That's okay, sir, please leave the building. But you just, you just gave a perfect example of why we need to have limits and control in the council meeting. So I'm sorry about that, council. Please resume after you.
I have a question for Frank.
Yes.
By limiting personal attacks, are you, are you violating the First Amendment?
The state law says that you may criticize the governing body as a whole, but you may not criticize an individual or call an individual names. But it is very clear. It says a governing body may not prohibit public criticism of the governing body. So if someone wants to come up and criticize and say this policy you're going to adopt about limiting public comment is just wrong and it shouldn't be done and so forth, you can criticize and it's, and it's allowed. The law says, the Open Meetings Act is very clear, you are allowed to criticize the governing body.
But not personal?
Not personal attacks, correct.
That is correct.
And that does not violate the First Amendment?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers, for asking for that clarification. So do we have, did we call a vote on it? Somebody remind?
There was a motion, a second.
There's a motion, do we have a second to that motion? Councilman Burton has seconded that motion. We'll call any further discussion. Mr. Hernandez, did you have anything? Mr. Ebersol? Ms. Weaver, anything to add? Mr. Sellers, anything to add? Mr. Burton?
Just to make sure, we're, we're doing six minutes total. Can't, can't limit the time on a
State mandated public hearing, state mandated public hearing, correct.
And that's, that's what's on the floor.
Okay, great. So let's go ahead and call for the vote, Ms. Weaver. Hi, correct. Mr. Ebersol?
Hi.
Mr. Hernandez?
Oh, no, it's, yes.
You can vote, sir. Yes, Mr. Sellers?
Aye.
Mr. Burton?
Aye.
So we have one nay and four ayes, the motion carries for Mr. Hernandez's proposed change to the to the council relations policy related to Citizen Comments at meetings. Mr. Garza will prepare and amend the six-minute deal and provide it with the council to adopt in the next meeting. Okay, number six, department reports and Q and A. Police Department, let's start with you first and then we'll go to the Fire Department, Community Development, Economic Development and Public Affairs. Let's start with the Police Department. Sir, do you have anything to report from your Police Department? You didn't come prepared with anything? Anything like you want to cover that you have concerns about your department or anything you'd like to discuss?
The only fact is that I guess we're in the process of possibly hiring three, three new officers because that would make us totally full for each shift. I guess I understand that.
All right, I'm sure the city administrator will be in touch with you on that particular deal. And so now we have the Fire Department, or Mr. Maticina acting as our ceremonial city administrator. Go ahead, Mr. Maticina.
I got nothing to add.
Anything going on? You want to let us know on the department?
No, no, not at the moment.
Nothing at all?
Yep.
Okay.
What was wrong with the tower? There was, there was something, I read something.
So all four of the hydraulics or five of the hydraulic cylinders failed. They all leaked, they're 21 years old. So the ones that extend out, outriggers and the ones that lift the truck all failed. And then the two on the turntable that caused it to rotate and extend and retract failed. They all leaked, so they all needed to be replaced, so that was a pretty major.
Has that been done already or in the process?
No, it's been done already.
Good deal.
And I'd like to commend you for your activism in the community in the fire extinguishers, I think y'all did, and you saw that in the newsletter. And I'd like to commend the Police Department. Several of our officers have been doing some community policing and saying hello and being friendly. And so we like that very much, commend the officers for that. And I'd like to take the time to thank our bailiff, who's been extremely professional from day one that I met him and everyone else that's done the bailiff as well from the Department of the Police to your department as well. And so do we have anything from Community Development, Ms. Rose Anderson?
I have.
Yeah, and I still have questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sellers had a question for
I have a question for the Police Department.
Mr. Man? Okay, thank you. Yes, go right ahead, Ms. Sellers.
What is the fine? Or when you go to someone's house for grass blowing on the street and give them a citation, how much is that fine?
I think that's code compliance.
Believe that. Several years ago, we gave authority to the Police Department to issue citations for people leaving grass on the street. I'm asking the dollar amount of that fine. I'd have to
You don't, you don't know.
I'd have to look into that, sir.
Would you like Rose's, see if she knows?
I just believe we need to visit that in the future.
Maybe on the new items, you want to put it on the agenda. Go ahead, Ms. Anderson on the Community Development, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that I hope city council and you mayor have noticed a positive difference in code compliance since our last meeting. And the code officer has been working very hard on bringing the city into compliance. And if you have any other questions on the staff report that I submitted, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Anderson on her department, Councilman Burton?
I know, I know there was concern of graffiti that I think it was taken care of, but a citizen had brought it up and was concerned that the graffiti was still there. But it was cleared up already when they made the complaint.
I'm not aware of which case, we have several graffiti cases open, but they are working on, on those cases. The graffiti on the frontier dumpsters, Frontier is responsible for retrieving those and removing the graffiti. So we're still waiting on those to be picked up, but they are aware of them.
Right. And so Ms. Anderson, I think we have a part-timer code compliance.
We have interviewed for a part-timer.
Okay.
He's not ready to begin yet.
Process, okay, but the current full-time we have, he's been doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
I did see the difference. I did notice Taka Kabana was covered up on the graffiti. He's been on top of Norma's and all the others. I saw Wendy's all cleaned up. I know he's dealing with the homeless and so he's really been proactive, ladies and gentlemen. Very, very active and I'm very pleased to see that change in the community.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear that.
I would like to piggyback on Mr. Sellers, the grass in the street thing. The apartments are really guilty of that.
Okay.
And there are court open cases right now with the one in particular down the road on Gentleman Road for not picking up the grass trimmings. We do have a couple of cases open for them as well.
Okay, thank you. So if anyone happens to see anything, just take the time, send a text. Guarantee our code guy will be out there right away. Any other questions?
Do citizens, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, no, please.
Do citizens have access to iWorks?
They do not.
They do not?
They have access to report a code complaint on our website via web portal. They can submit a case that way, but they do not have access to iWorks.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Ebersol? Any questions, Mr. Hernandez? Any comments? So again, I'd just like to say to staff during these hard times that we're experiencing difficult right now with some positions that we're dealing with, I want to say thank you for holding up the fort and doing your duty to help us out and help the city. So on behalf of everyone, thank you very much for that, it's recognized. Economic Development and Public Affairs, we don't have anyone, so let's go ahead and move. Any announcement, comments and requests from any mayor and council members? Item number seven, anybody? David, do you want to put, you don't need to, you can just call, right? Okay. Now, since I city administrator, will, you have anything? Okay. Item number nine, agenda item request for mayor and council members. Do we place on a future city council agenda? Anybody have anything? All right?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Sellers.
I noticed, I noticed on the financial report, there was some money spent on the parks. I don't know how that money was spent or why it was spent or where, you know, where it went. But I, I'm with Tracy on, let's start saving some money to spend on the parks. I want to get bids on tree work. That's, that's priority. I want to get bids on the tree work. That's the first step and I want that on the agenda.
Okay. So, excuse me, if I may, just real quick, Mr. Sellers, maybe another alternative would be we've got another budget hearing coming up. At the budget hearing, you can instruct Mr. Messick that you would like to see funds expended on the park. And at that point, you can address it, correct, Mr. Messick? And then place it on the agenda for an item on the agenda, have it approved by your members, or it could be administratively done. Either way, it may not require a vote from the council, correct, counselor? Okay, so you got two options, you can do it. Put it on the agenda or just instruct Mr. Messick in the next budget hearing and be prepared, okay? And he'll allocate funds for that.
All right.
Okay, who needs it? Mr. Hernandez?
Well, he was talking about trees. I think the restrooms are high priority right now as well, so we need to have that on.
Good, let's get in on that budget hearing. Mr. Burton?
We'll just put it on the budget.
There you go, okay, great. Yeah, that's when you have your time, now that you have this budget process is when you can get your things done for the citizens. Mr. Ebersol?
Since David mentioned he didn't know what the money was spent for, is there any way we can get the actual receipts and he can get a copy of it so you can see where the money is actually going?
What you can do is each one of you can ask and send it by email to the department with that request. And you either give them a time limit, you want it by two days, three days, whatever his time may allocate, because I know he has a lot on his plate right now. So just work with him, but I'm sure he can get that information and his staff can do that with Yvonne. Okay, Mr. Burton?
I think it would probably be better if they addressed the city manager and let him
Okay.
delegate that.
Yeah, so either way, but they can, Mr. Enriquez stated in the last meeting, you can feel free to send it directly to the department. So, but either way, we'll work, sounds good. Okay, so just make sure you put it in writing, get it in an email, send it to staff in their department. They'll comply. If you have any problem, you go back to the city administrator or come to me and I'll make sure we'll address it in the appropriate manner. Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment? Okay, the time is eight, do we have second by Ms. Weaver? Mr. Ebersol? Okay? Mr. Hernandez? Mr. Sellers?
About time.
Mr. Burton? Great. The time is eight 17 PM. We did a pretty good meeting today. Thank you, council, very much.